District Board of Trustees Meeting, today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. And we are going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And we'll start off with Agenda Item Number One, Adoption for the Agenda as Submitted.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Walker, second by Trustee Varner. Any School Board comments? Seeing on, any public comment? Seeing on, all those in favor? I, annual post, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Two, Flag Salute by Trustee Clappam. Thank you, Trustee Clappam. Agenda Item Number Three, Superintendent's Report, Superintendent Feeling.
Thank you, President Ramirez. Tonight, we have a couple guests visiting. It is one of my great pleasures to know that I have lots of amazing people around me that do some incredible work. So first, if I could have Mr. Tom Reimer come on up over here. Feel free to, any of those four chairs are yours, sir.
That's a hot seat.
Mr. Reimer was selected by the Nevada Athletic Directors Association as the 2025 4A-5A Athletic Director of the Year. Everyone knows this is an easy job because everyone, everyone agrees with you all the time, right? Now, I've gotten to know Mr. Reimer pretty well here over the last year and a half, and just really impressed with so much of the work that he's done. An example, the other day, I was over at Carson High, and he had a group of, I don't know, probably 20, 25 kids sitting in the upper cafeteria area. And I didn't know exactly what was happening, but walking by, I see, you know, I see the word "vision" on the screen and, you know, him talking with them and trying to get them engaged. And after finding out that, you know, he's working with the leaders in a lot of the athletic groups and talking about, you know, talking about the future of the athletic program and what they want it to be at Carson High. So I just think great conversations and a great way to approach a lot of these things with our, our kids. So, Mr. Reimer, congratulations on that, and if you'd like to say a few things.
I don't necessarily need to say anything. I mean, like you said, it's, everyone thanks me all the time and they appreciate everything that we do. It's all for the coaches and the people that support us, from, from your office to Dan Carstens, to Ms. Macy, who's behind me. It's really appreciative, and even the parents who are in front of me, Ms. Walt, and how they support the teams and their students is what makes it successful. It's not me, but thank you.
Do you want to say anything to AJ for saying your job was so easy?
Any comments from the, okay?
Congratulations, and thank you, because you are, a lot of athletic directors out there aren't very approachable, you know, to parents and whatnot, and, and you seem to be, you know, at the events and whatnot, parents, you're very approachable, parents feel very comfortable talking to you, students, you know, I mean, I know my son just thinks the world of you. And so that speaks volumes, you know, when you're out there and you're visible and stuff, that just really does speak volumes. So congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I also want to congratulate you. I feel that athletics is such a huge component to student success, and we definitely thank you for your work, for your hard work that you do with all our students.
Much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Another round of applause.
There we go. Also, to note, on Tuesday, March 11th, we are going to have some ladies here in the district get recognized as women of distinction here in the community, something that the Carson City Chamber of Commerce, Ronnie Hanneman, started up a number of years ago. Actually, if I recall, the very first year that she did it, Mary Przynski was one of them when she was still superintendent here. And Mrs. Fuson, who is in the crowd, was recognized last year. This year, we have the amazing Candy Robles, who I thought was...
Just left the room, probably.
She just walked out, okay. Our, yeah, our CTE and Work-based Learning Coordinator up at Carson High, and really does a lot of work around the district. And our very own trustee Molly Walt and President Lupe Ramirez. So congratulations to the both of you.
Thank you so much.
Lastly, I was going to give a few updates on some legislative bills, but there's a lot of them, and many of them are impactful. And I think the, just for right now, the most impactful thing, and I'll be up at the Legislature tomorrow, there will be the formal presentation of the K-12 funding. That came out in the Governor's Budget, so that'll be presented to the Joint Assembly and Senate Committee. And it's going to be a really interesting conversation, that I think will have a lot of public comment and quite a bit of concern, and Mr. Winward will be speaking to some of that tonight. Bills are starting to be heard, kind of in their, their first round in, in the Assembly and Senate Committees. And so that, some of them are just coming across our radar, but we're starting to follow those and give comments on them. But the, the main concern right now is, is this funding piece. So we will be very much on top of that at the next board meeting. We'll actually have a formal agenda item to give an update on some of these bills as they start coming out and start progressing, and talk about some of the first conversations around them. So we will get you those updates then. And that, I think, is all I have for tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, Board Reports, Board Member Comments. So this is for information only. We'll start off with our school representatives, Carson High School Representative Diana Ancot, and if I have Pioneer Representative come up as well, Caitlin Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Diana Ancot, one of the School Board Representatives for Crescent High School. To start us off this evening, all-spring sports, baseball, softball, track, golf, and swim has already started and has been practicing throughout the week. For updates within our Student Council class, we have announced our new Student Body Officers and Class Officers for the new school year 2025 to 2026, and class member applications are still open. We also did our middle school recruitments. We did one last week for Crescent Middle School and one this week for Eagle Valley Middle School, or one earlier today, actually, for Eagle Valley Middle School. We basically just presented to the middle schoolers, and in our presentation, we talked about the application process and how to get into our leadership class, and we also gave them a little bit of sneak peek of what it's like to be in the class. And we also answered some of their questions about the council, our class, and also being in high school in general. And for upcoming events, our Matter Week is coming up. That's basically just the Mental Health Awareness Week. From March 10th to the 14th, our class already came up with new dress-up day themes and also activities to, for our student body to help them relieve their stress and also be more aware of their mental health. And our class is currently working on the materials and also the posters and just prepping for that week. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Caitlin Nguyen, and I will be presenting Pioneer's announcements. I'm excited to announce that just earlier, our juniors completed their ACT testing. On behalf of juniors everywhere, I would like to say, oh, finally. But on behalf of Pioneer, I would like to say thank you, thank you, thank you to Carson High for coordinating with us, because without their help, we wouldn't have been able to get in smoothly and complete all of our tests on time with the help of the staff, even though they didn't really have to be here today. So thank you, Carson High. Our Week of Kindness was also a huge success. Students and staff made thank you notes and notes of kindness for each other, and they also made friendship bracelets for each other and some people at home. I made one for my mom. They also completed kindness bingo cards, and they were traded in for rewards on Monday. They also made a kindness trivia quiz, and they completed it. And on Friday, they can, they received some kindness fortune, fortune cookies, without the cookie, just a slip, with notes on how to be kind with or without a Week of Kindness or a friendship bracelet or a note. The Speech and Debate Tournament in Elko went pretty well. Pioneer students took home several awards for impromptu speeches, among other things, and right now, they're having weekly practice sessions after school to hone their craft before their next big step. We had an excellent reception to the candy grams offered by our National Honor Society. What was really special to me was some of the staff and students, they ordered $1 candy grams to support domestic violence and, to support the fight against domestic violence, sorry about that, but also to offer notes to students who hadn't received notes before. I think that was really sweet. And we hope to be able to offer our student body and staff connections, opportunities to connect, even if it isn't because of a candy gram or a Week of Kindness in the future. Thank you. This is Caitlin signing off.
Thank you, both of you did a wonderful job. Appreciate the report. Okay, Nevada Association of School Boards, NASB update, Trustee Varner?
I really have no update, other than March 5th is coming up for the Day of the Legislature and the training on the 6th. And I think everybody got a email from Renee this morning about further information coming out by the end of the week about those two dates, so that's really about all I have. So hopefully, everybody can make the Day of the Legislature and the training.
Wonderful, thank you. No board announcements, we'll start off with Trustee Peterson.
All right, I've got a really great list of stuff to report from Carson High. Like Caitlin said at Pioneer, they finished their ACT testing today with the juniors. It went well. Pioneer and Carson Main Campus worked together to fill one of their graduation requirements. They also report that access testing is going well. Only a handful of students are still waiting to test. I appreciate all the students' hard work and the dedication of the parents getting them to school each day. We are rounding out the testing this week with CTE testing. Students are testing in their CTE classes for the next few weeks. As we already recognize, our Athletic Director, Thomas Reimer at CHS, was selected as the Athletic Director of the Year for the 4-5A schools, so congrats for that. The Carson High Ski Team competed in state last week and had 11 of their students qualified to compete in that competition. Carson High's Speech and Debate, like Caitlin said as well, for Pioneer, differently ago, I think, because ours was not in Elko, it was at Reno High, and we had lots of students participating. It was their fourth regular tournament in the Northern Nevada Forensics League, and we took several top spots at CHS. Cadet Anna Shane in the NJROTC, she competed and placed third at the regional for the 22 Air Rifle Championships. And her accuracy earned her a spot at the Navy's National Air Rifle Competition in Anniston, Alabama, which was held last weekend. And she placed 123rd nationally, with only it being her second year as a cadet. And then what I want to add, personal interest, because my kid's on the team, the Carson High Bowling Team is currently sitting at 10-0. We just finished playoffs, and we are one of the last two teams standing, competing tomorrow for the championship match against Damone at the National Bowling Stadium in Reno. And if they win, this will be like number 18 of the last 21 years that Carson has taken the title regionally. So they don't get a lot of attention, but that little bowling team is a pretty fantastic group of athletes, so high fives to them.
That's awesome, wishing the best.
Thank you. And no report from Mark Twain this week.
Great. Trustee Roberts?
All right, so Fremont has their Reading Week next week, and they have lots of plans. Look at Parent Square for your daily reminder, your nightly reminder of what the dress-up day is for the next day. And thank you to all the community members and parents who've signed up to come in and read to the kids. And then Bingo for Books will be on Tuesday, the 4th, from 5:00 to 6:30. They will be serving pizza, so please get your RSVPs in. And there's a big incentive to tape Mr. Hersl and Dr. Ward up on the wall. So your reading minutes all this week account to length of duct tape. So get those minutes in, so we can get lots of duct tape and get those two up on a wall.
That's awesome. Okay, Trustee Varner?
I'd like to see them taped to the wall. Also, before I start on my report, I'd like to thank Dr. Ward at Fremont for allowing me to come in and observe one of their early release day training sessions. I found it very informative, because I didn't really know what occurred during those periods of time, so it was interesting, and I think it was very successful. They had training on Abbott note-taking.
Nice.
Then, pardon, I'm sorry. For Boardwick, the Reading Week is March 3rd through the 7th, and please see their Parent Square for daily dress-up days and fun activities, which they're having all week. They will have their Reading Night on Tuesday, March 4th. There'll be a lot of fun activities, including Bingo for Books, reading to dogs, would be pretty interesting, and so much more. Please join them from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And then they're also going to have a food truck or food trucks available for those families who would wish to purchase a meal. And then Boardwick Braves Night at the Reno Aces is coming up on Friday, April 25th. The school, their school choir will be singing the National Anthem, and it will be a fun night for all. And then see Parent Square to purchase tickets for that event. So I think that'd be very exciting. For Fritsch Elementary, we have Principal Brown in the audience, thank you. He wanted to share that they were excited about the number of Fritsch families joining them for their Friday PTO-sponsored Hot Chocolate Socials. So thank you for the families for attending that. Also, they've completed their access training, and would like to thank the parents of their EL students for preparing their children to do their best each day of the testing. And that ends my report, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Clappam?
Thank you. I have a report from Carson Middle School with Ms. Robinson. She states that some of the CMS students attended a musical theater competition of America in Anaheim this last week. Students performed for Broadway choreographers and directors and received some great feedback. Their group number received first place in the musical medley for their piece of Growing Pains. One of their very own eighth-grade students got third place for her monologue, and they are so proud of their musical theater students. Wrestling season's just started at CMS with their first match last Friday. Girls volleyball eighth-grade team placed third in the Toniva Championships, and the seventh-grade team won first place. Track season is warming up as well, with some preseason training beginning March 3rd at the school. And PTO is inviting anyone from the community to play bingo on Thursday, February 27th, from 6:30 to 8:00 in the cafeteria. This is a fundraiser for the PTO to support their students, and they're giving away prizes for bingo winners and selling hot dog meals for $4. And they are hoping to sell, fill the cafeteria, not sell it. And I have no report for Eagle Valley.
Okay, great, thank you. Trustee Walt?
So I just have a shout-out for fifth-grader Empire at, at Empire Elementary School, Alicia Cloverd. She made state finals for the national spelling bee, and she'll be competing in Las Vegas in the next couple of weeks.
Nice.
And I hope I didn't ridicule her name, but did I?
She left. Trustee Walker?
So last week, I attended the ESA, ESEA National Conference in Texas, and I thought I'd warm up a little bit, and a polar vortex overtook the state of Texas, and so I froze. But one of the nice things in a, one of the sessions, I had the privilege of sitting next to a couple Seeliger teachers and catching up with them and hearing about the great things happening at their school. And so I really loved the opportunity to have those conversations and really, you know, see the passion that we have for kids in this district. Then I came home, and I was trying to get caught up in reading the news and whatnot, and found out I have the distinct honor of sitting behind, sitting between two women of distinction. So that, of course, made me really proud for both you, well-deserved honor, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Molly almost got away with it, but she's also celebrating her birthday tomorrow, so let's make sure that we...
Happy birthday.
Give her lots of birthday love.
Happy birthday.
And I have to give her a hard time, because last week, she told me I smelled like fabric softener, and if you notice how far away from me she's sitting today. I mean, I guess I'd rather smell like fabric softener than... All right, but good things are also happening at Seeliger Elementary School. And so Mrs. Prior reports that they are continuing to build as a team, and as a matter of fact, she noticed that today, all of her staff were wearing Seeliger SSA. And so she appreciates all the school spirit and is loving the spring, and they are gearing up for Reading Week next week. And so they're going to kick off with two assemblies. They're going to have a magician, several guest readers, and then drop everything and read, and probably a few other surprises. So I hope the Pirates have a good time next week.
That's awesome, great, thank you. So Caitlin did a wonderful job reporting on the activities happening at Pioneer, but I do want to say that I ran into a student the other day at an ice cream shop, and I just, you know, was doing small talk with her, and I asked her, what grade are you in? And she told me, and she was very proud to say that she is attending Pioneer and that she loves that school and that she enjoys the, the environment that she's at. And so it was really nice feedback. I had not even told her that I was a school trustee, but, you know, she, you know, was very proud of, of the school that she is going to, and so it was very nice to hear that from a student, so. I also want to share with you guys a little bit of an update on the Carson City School District Foundation Board. So they are discussing whether or not our, our role serving on their board as Board President and then the Superintendent, if we have voting rights, they are having that discussion. And at this point, they are considering amending their bylaws, and if they do move forward with that, they're going to bring that to our board for approval. And they also did clarify for me that they do meet on the second Thursday of the month, with the exception of February, March, and April. So for the rest of the, of the year, they meet on the second Thursday of the month at 11:30. So if any of you are interested in going with me the next, at the next meeting, please let me know. And then, let's see, they are also supporting the Future Business Leaders of America on the Magazine Project. They're placing an ad to promote the Foundation Annual Fundraising Campaign. They're seeking for community partners, and they're also sharing the, the goals of the foundation, bless you, the whole, the goals of the foundation, which is to provide mini grants for teachers, and then they're also supporting JumpStar and AP programs. And so those are the, the programs that they are supporting with, with the funding that they raise. Also, on March 2nd, we will be joining Sheriff Furlong at St. Teresa Avila for a presentation with the Mexican consulate. They're going to be coming to inform the families about their legal rights. I think this is going to be a very educational session, and I would pass on the invitation for all the trustees. I think it would be good for us to be informed. And I believe that is all I have. Oh, no, one more, I'm sorry. So Nancy Varner is going to be doing a presentation, or actually, a series of workshops, the Tapatia Ice Cream Shop. And these workshops are going to be in Spanish, and it's the Love and Logic. These workshops, she has held them for our, our parents, and she has had a good turnout, but she also wants to do this series of workshops in Spanish, in hopes that she can increase attendance from the, from our Spanish-speaking parents. And so the workshops are going to start on the 7th of March, and it will be every Friday from 9:00 to 11:00, and they will go through April 11. So we hope that she has good participation attending these workshops, because it's wonderful information and important information that the parents should receive, so. I believe that concludes my report, all right? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Association Reports for Discussion Only. Do we have? No, no Association Reports, okay, very good. Then moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, and this is Public Comment, and I'm going to skip the fir, the first section of that statement that pertains to instructions on how to submit public comments online, and I will start off with the section that applies to in, a public comment. In making public comments, speakers are asked to come to the table or podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Commenters are instructed to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and not simply repeat comments made by others. And this is for discussion only, and we have Sheriff Furlong joining us. Please come forward.
I'll be in detention soon. I just wanted to take an opportunity here to inform the board, as well as the members here and those watching, and appreciation of this board, the school district, AJ, for allowing us to create an initiative here in Carson that will bring the Mexican consulate here to speak with Carson folks and to hear the challenges that they face, the fears they face, the resources that are available for those folks, and better educate our community. I know that Ms. Ramirez would love to have had a much larger room capability, so that we could open it up to much more people, but the Catholic Church is hosting this event, and they do have limited space, and we do respect that. But between the school district, you folks, and the sheriff's office, we became co-sponsors of this event. The consulate is very excited to attend. There will be an opportunity for Ms. Ramirez and AJ to meet directly in a couple of meetings that we plan on having, along with our sheriffs of the adjoining counties, Washoe County and Douglas County, to speak about issues that are key to us here. And so I think that this initiative, while it may seem small, it is very large. It is a step in the right direction. We want all of our students, all of our families, all of the folks that live here in town to feel safe. That's a challenge in today's world, and that biggest challenge is led by misinformation. So I appreciate, AJ, you're giving me a call and summoning me to the principal's office, where I had the opportunity to meet with several of you. where I had the opportunity to meet with several of you and discuss this. I want to thank, um, Father, um, Father Tom for accepting, uh, the invitation, if you will, to host it. It is limited to his congregation, but I think that this is a first step in what we can improve relationships in this community. So thank you very, very much, both of you and those, all of you folks up here because you be, all became co-sponsors of something that could be very big here in Carson.
Thank you, Sheriff Furlong. I, I appreciate what you just said, improving relationships because that's the only way that we can make things happen, working as a team. So thank you for your partnership. Any questions or comments?
No, ju- just thank you for, um, co-sponsoring this as well and getting it up and going because I think the conversation is important. Um, they have been announcing it at, um, every mass for the last couple of weeks. So, you know, hopefully it will have great attendance. So I encourage everybody to attend.
I hope that it turns out very, very well and this initiative is step one, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you all.
And I just want to add in there that Lupe is kind of downplaying her role. And so I want to thank her leadership because she's been, um, doing a lot of research and working with families as well as sheriff's office and, uh, superintendent fueling. So thank you for your leadership and helping, uh, get some resources for families. So you deserve kudos also.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Our families, our family is needed and so we, we want to do what, what is right.
AJ, anything you want to add?
I, I just really want to say thank you, um, for, for helping. There are a lot of, uh, connections and resources that we're simply not aware of. And so thank you for helping us out with, uh, making some of this happen.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for your time. I know you're super busy and here you are, so we appreciate you.
I'm not out of detention yet.
Oh, thank you, Sheriff. All right, agenda item number seven. Um, discussion and possible action to adopt newly proposed CCSD policy 1065, information and commen- communications technology, ICT, security. And this is sec- this is for second reading for possible action. Welcome, Mr. Maderas.
Good evening, President Ramirez and, uh, trustees. I'm here to present on policy number 1065 pertaining to information and communications technology, security. Um, I would like to bring to your attention a couple of changes to this. So based on board feedback from the last meeting, what was referred to as a disclaimer under item three, where it states data loss can be caused by human error, so on and so forth. That was moved up under paragraph one to, uh, better clarify that it is not an action that we were going to take as a bulleted item. Um, it's just kind of a disclaimer. So that's one of the changes. And then there are three, uh, other changes that should be represented in blue in the updated document that, um, Renee passed out to you guys. So the first, uh, the first of those is in paragraph two where it says, um, Director of Information Technology, that has been changed to Director of Innovation and Technology to accurately represent the title.
Okay.
And then, um, the second item is on bulleted item number one, where it says, um, ensure reasonable efforts are made to implement and maintain appropriate ICT and data security measures. Uh, the and was previously after the word data, and so that was moved in front to separate those two items. And then the, um, the third change is on item number two. It says maintain the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of ICT. It should say data, so that's also changed in the updated document. So those are the only three changes for clarification purposes. Um, as Mr. Feeling mentioned in the, in his presentation for the first, first reading, this is a foundational policy that's going to support various other internal standards and, and procedures and practices to help formalize a lot of the cybersecurity efforts that we're doing. Um, and that'll be to support our efforts around sensitive data handling, technology, security in general, student data privacy and things of that sort. Uh, any questions?
Any questions from the board? No, it looks clear. Okay, then if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve February 25th, 2025 as the adopted date for policy 1065, information and communication technology, ICT, security.
Okay, motion by trustee Varner and second by trustee Walker. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All of us in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for this work. I appreciate it. Okay. Agenda item number eight, uh, presentation and discussion on budget assumptions for the Carson City School District for fiscal year 2025-2026. And this is for discussion only. Uh, Mr. Winward?
Thank you, Madam President. Does that mean my time's up? I thought Mr. Ramirez was going to mention that Mr. Feeling told us to draw this out, so we all felt fulfilling after a long meeting, so. With that in mind, in conclusion.
He's like, here we go.
No, Mr. Feeling never do such a thing, so. And I, I don't think I have a reputation of being long-winded. If I do, please let me know. Three minutes or less. Challenge accepted. Alrighty, so, uh, a couple new board members, kind of what this is, is just kind of a first little bit of information of, of how the budget landscape is starting to shape up. Uh, really this time of year, there's a lot of unknowns, a lot of information that, uh, um, well, we use the word assumption very correctly in this situation because we're making a lot of it up as we go. But, uh, it's informed based off the information we have. So my presentation, I'm just going to kind of cover these things, just a quick budget timeline to kind of give you an idea of, of what things will happen over the course of the next three or four months as our, as we go from, uh, budget information that floats around in the cloud to the, the final budget. And then even the, the final budget of this year and any amendments that we make to that. So also just a quick legislative update and then we'll discuss funding considerations, revenue assumptions, and expense assumptions. So, uh, this is just kind of a quick timeline of, of, uh, how our budget shapes up. So, uh, February 15th is when we get preliminary revenue projections from taxation. That's always been an important date that they've told us is kind of the kickoff of this, but that, that's less important these days since our, uh, with the PCFP, those, those tax monies go directly to the state education fund. And, uh, and then it's divvied out from there where that used to be money that came to us that we used more in, in kind of some of our planning. March 25th is when those final projections come from taxation. And then either that same day or on the April 8th, a board meeting, we'll present to you a tentative budget. That's the, the formal, about 78 pages of the budget of all the funds of, of how things will look. And that gives you a chance to, to get a first look of the actual budget document. We don't vote or approve on it, just again for discussion and input, for you guys to give us feedback on that before we create the final budget. On April 15th, that tentative budget is due to taxation. Two copies, single sided, like they like every single year. And, and then, uh, again, that's, that's just kind of the, the, the beginning point. And we will continue to work to, to take that tentative budget that you've all seen, tweak it, finalize it, do what we need to, to, to present our final budget, where we have a, a budget hearing that's part of the, the open meeting here. And then that's where you guys would approve that budget and then we provide that to taxation. Again, this year, being a legislative year, NRS 354 gives us the option to amend a budget within 30 days of the end of legislative session. Um, high likelihood that happens just as, as things are finalized and things will probably come right down to the end of the session that may have a fiscal impact on us. We can take that budget and, and amend it within those 30 days. And we'd bring that again to you with a budget hearing and you would approve that. And then that's all for the FY26 budget. The final thing that we can do by June 8th, we can make a final, um, amendment of our FY25 budget and, uh, and provide that to the state. Uh, we have done that some years, some years we haven't, just kind of depends on how things are shaking out as we go through the rest of the year. So, any questions about the timeline?
Questions from the board? No questions so far?
Yeah.
Yeah, Molly, go ahead.
So can you give an example?
Let me start my three minute timer.
To your response, that is. Um, for an example, what would be, um, for the FY25, you know, you're amended, if you're asking for an amendment, would that just be like moving line items from categories, you know, within a specific budget? Or would it be asking, have you ever been able to ask for a carryover from an FY25 to go to a 2026?
So we can move line items, um, uh, per NRS, we can move those. And then we inform the board like, hey, we adjusted, we're not creating any more budget authority. We're just taking it and rearranging it, uh, with, within functions. Um, an amendment would be in the case of, uh, an example would be like, hey, our special education expenditures were higher this year and we want to increase the transfer from our general fund to the special education fund. That would require an amendment. Yeah. So kind of, uh, as things are finishing up, if, if there's something that we see that, hey, you know, we had some, someone anticipated like special, special education expenditures, that's probably one of the most common things we have is, you know, we, we had budget authority to move this month. You know, 7.4 million or it's actually going to take 7.6 million. That would be a, uh, an example of something we do within that final budget adjustment. Yes. Alrighty. Um, whoa, too far. Legislative updates, um, we're still very early in the session. Um, we have, uh, in, any bill that could potentially have a fiscal impact to the school comes to us and we review it to see if it will or will not have a fiscal impact. And, um, there'll be a lot this year. I think I've answered about, uh, 40 of those to date. And there's about another 20 pending and who knows how many that will be. So lots of movement and action in regards to education. Um, a- as Mr. Feeling mentioned, tomorrow, uh, we'll hear more about the, the K-12 education budget uh, in that presentation. There's just a lot of uncertain question marks we have so far with the state's overall budget and, and, uh, education allocation so far. And then just kind of the climate around the federal government's actions right now just increases that uncertainty. So hopefully some of that will kind of clear itself up as we move towards that April 15th deadline for the tentative budget and then as the session finalizes, we'll, we'll know even more. A couple of things that, uh, as things currently sit, um, I, I think I would call this the very definition of flat funding. Um, FY26, uh, looks like currently we'd be looking about a $3 per pupil increase. With our enrollment, that's about $20,000 over what we had, uh, for FY25. So not, not a lot of encouragement there as far as, um, e- extra funding for us to see what we can do with that. FY27 for Carson City, Carson City School District, that amount is, uh, proposed to be $75 per pupil, which is slightly over half a million dollars. Again, very early in the, in the session, but that's the information we have at this point. Um, that may or may not change as, as the session rolls through. Uh, another thing that's happening with the SB 231 increases, if, if you're not familiar with that, that's the money that was given specifically for raises for, uh, classified and certified staff. Uh, that money is looking, they're looking to move that from the special revenue fund to the general fund. So that money would still be there, but it would just change the way that it's kind of funded and, and the mechanisms we would use to, to pay that to teachers. So it's not going away, it's not increasing, it's staying the same, but the method that we account for it would change.
So then would the allocation have to go towards that? I mean, it would, like, no school district could say, oh, since it's in the general fund, we're going to use it for this purpose rather than the purpose it was intended.
Uh, it's too soon to know exactly what they have. The intention is that, that that's to be used for the same as it was last year, but rather than, than hold it in a special revenue category, it would move to the general fund or something similar. Like I said, that's, that's what's being talked about. We don't know what that is. The good, the good news of that is that will be continued, you know, actions are, are continue that so we don't have to say, hey, guess what, everyone, we're going to give you a negative raise this year because SB 231 is going away. So that, that's the good news of that and we'll know more as, as that's kind of shaped of, of how we'll be instructed to, to utilize that.
Just to clarify, excuse me, to clarify, if that money stays in, the state's going to fund that. They're not going to have us take it out of our general fund, right?
Yes, the, the state is intending to fund that. Alrighty. Excuse me. Um, our funding objectives, things that we kind of have to consider for our budget this year, of course, the, the one, number one on our list every year that I've worked here has been our enrollment decrease. Um, we're expecting probably about 45 students less than this year, uh, which is continuing our, our moderate decline. And that unfortunately gives us less resources to work with. So we're, we're building the budget with that in mind, knowing that we may have less students than we have this year. Uh, as always, you know, we're employee compensation makes up about 85% of our budget. That's something that we str- always strongly consider. Um, staffing vacancies, uh, Mr. Saddle has done excellent work in, in reducing those. And then also we look to our strategic plan requirements to see if there's anything that we can do to, to continue the services or increase the services that, that we plan for through that strategic, um, plan. And then, uh, we're just starting to kind of get a really good look of operating costs increase and, and fortunately inflation isn't quite as scary of a word this year as it has been the last couple of years, but still something that we look at as, as we're building that budget out.
Molly? Um, you know, because I do know, I mean, inflation is, is impacting me daily in, in my day job. But, um, how does it, what are you seeing in the school district as the most impactful? I mean, is it the insur- our insurance has gone up like horribly, but what is the school district seeing?
You know, our utilities have gone up slightly. I haven't heard anything about any increases on that front. I, I don't have any new data. I know we had a sizable increase to our general liability insurance last year. Kind of hoping that, uh, we don't see that a similar increase this year. I haven't heard anything to this point yet. Um, I don't know if no news is good news or not, unfortunately. And then just, you know, kind of the general, overall cost of goods. Um, a lot of our paper products, uh, especially through food services, we see a slight increase in those.
You seen, do you, do you guys notice a big difference with the busing and gas, the fuel? Have you seen like, I mean, has that really been an impact or not so much?
Um, for the current year, we haven't, we haven't seen anything that's been above kind of what we planned for. You know, the, the uptick that has taken recently, that's the kind of thing that is, as we look and kind of project that out next year, we, we kind of try and plan for a worst case scenario and hope that it doesn't end up worse than what we planned for. But that, that is a significant cost, is our fuel costs. Alrighty, um, our, our revenue, kind of what we know so far. So this is just a comparison for what, uh, our December budget of FY25, what we planned for revenue wise. Uh, 7,001 students is what we included in that budget, uh, with our FY25 per pupil amount of $10,114. And all the PCFP and local, local federal funding, that was 81.4 million is what we included in our last budget. So just kind of keeping that in mind as kind of a, a measuring stick for where we're looking this year. Um, our, like I said, our, we're budgeting for 6,884 students, uh, which is considered less than what we had. Again, in, in FY25 is a little unique that we've been going down, but, uh, with our December budget, we're actually able to budget for a few more students. So that was a nice little surprise there, but then that does kind of separate us a little bit more from what December's looking like to what we expect next year to look like. So you can see that $10,117 is $3 more per pupil. And so our, our adjusted base funding is, um, less than what we received last year, uh, mostly due to that decline in enrollment. Uh, nice thing is our, our other PCFP funding is, is about a half million dollars higher. That kind of makes up for some of that. And we're not anticipating anything different in our local or, or federal or other funds for this year as compared to last year. So overall, 80.8 million, um, you know, about $600,000 less than what we were planning for in our December budget. And then just as a note, um, if those SB 231s were to be rolled into the general fund, then that would be looking at, uh, like 83.4 million dollars. But that wouldn't give you a good apples to apples comparison with last year. So I've just noted that below that. So you can kind of look at what the FY25 is, what the FY26 is. So you can kind of look at what the FY '25 is, what the FY '26 is looking at to give you a good straight-line comparison. So a little bit less funding than what we had this year, which is not how I like to start things out, but that's our reality. And then I want to talk about some of the expenditures that we're planning for. Again, where compensation is a large part of it, one of the biggest things that will be a large challenge is the PERS increase of 3.25%, takes effect July 1st. And our portion of that would be $1.8 million over the course of FY '26. So comparing that with the 20,000 new dollars we're going to get, it starts us off on the wrong foot. A couple of, some more information, just kind of if all of our employees receive their steps like we've traditionally done, the cost of that's $860,000. And then just to kind of give you an idea, it's a negotiation year, so we don't know what this would be, but each 1% of salary increase reflects about an $811,000 for each 1% for a cost of living adjustment. And then our health insurance, we've assumed a 10% increase, that's equal to about $485,000. So aside from those, other benefits are stable, but unfortunately a lot of red ink on this, where things are higher than what we've had in the past.
I thought we heard that the health insurance was going to stay the same, that they weren't going to be increasing it.
That's for this fiscal year, so we, which, and it runs on our calendar year, so that's half of next year.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we did kind of plan, as of January 1, halfway through the year, it could go up and we don't know what that number is yet.
Right.
Having seen...
Calendar and fiscal, sorry.
Yeah. It's one of those fun things we get to try and budget for, so. Other expense considerations, non-staffing, we're currently kind of budgeting that flat. You know, that's probably going to change as we kind of closer, a little bit more analysis on what inflation is doing. We may see some adjustments there and as we get more information on some of our higher-dollar costs that go in that category. And then with our staffing, we still may have some positions sliding one way or the other from general fund to grant-funded positions as we get kind of closer to the end of the year and know more information about our grant funds available to us. So overall, bottom line, looking at $80.8 million of revenue compared with $85.7 million of expenditures, which gives us a projected deficit of $4.9 million. Had to look at Mr. Varner as I said that, he couldn't make eye contact with me, I apologize for that. Last year this time, we were projecting about 1.1 million and I was pretty comfortable in that we would end up with not having a, that that amount would be less. This 4.9 million, I have a strong feeling that we'll end up at a deficit when it's all said and done at the end of FY '26, given how, based off the information that we have today. So there's nothing really rosy about that, but that's the reality. The nice thing is our district positioned itself to where if we do have a large deficit, it's not going to put us in any danger or any fund balance is still healthy. And after a year like that, I would consider to still be healthy. Of course, we want to look to try and save any which way we can and reduce that deficit without reducing the services that we offer.
My question would be for Superintendent Fugli. As we're looking at this projection and also in the process of having to shift grant-funded positions to general funds, it might be wise to start looking at what those programs are and figuring out where we could fill them in with vacancies we have. And, I mean, I just think if this is kind of the trajectory we're on, we probably want to start tightening our belts a little bit.
Thank you, Tracy Walker. And I think it's important really that that last note, so this is, this is the starting point. And so this is not taking into account retirements and resignations, which are going to, that will put a dent in that number, it'll improve that number. There's still a lot to go in terms of the work that we have to do over these coming, over these coming months. And really, to your point, Tracy Walker, looking at some of those positions, vacancies, I mean, looking at enrollment, looking at need, there may be, have to be some adjustments there, but at, you know, in all worlds, we want to make that as minimally impactful to the services we provide, right? So, but we will be updating you on all this on a regular basis as we move forward and fine-tune it. Right? I think, so there's two things to this, is that the expenditure number, I think, will only, this is sort of a worst case, not even worst case, it's just, it's kind of where we are now and kind of what we're forecasting out, what it looks like. So I think that number will improve over time and that's what we'll be working on. The revenue number is still five months from being finalized, or four months, I guess. So we have, we have a long way to go with that. So that's why it's important to, so I'll be at the legislature tomorrow as some of this information is being presented. And there's a lot of unhappiness with these numbers across all districts. We are not unique in any way. So that's what we'll be, we'll be working on both sides of that equation here over the coming months.
Molly? Oh, Richard, I'm sorry.
No problem. What, if this number stays the same, the 4.9 million deficit, what will our ending fund balance look like percentage-wise?
At the end of FY '24, it was 17.3 million. Assuming that stays level, which we don't know exactly how they sure will land, but assuming that that doesn't go up or down, you know, 17.3 minus 4.9 is going to take us to about 12.4. We're currently using about 21%, that would take us to about 14% ending fund balance, which is still much, much higher than the 4% the state requires, but, you know, most financial organizations like the 16.6% is a comfortable, safe ending fund balance and that's kind of what we strive for.
Well, I have to say this, for six years, since I've been on the board, I've asked, you know, why we can't get more towards a balanced budget. And so I guess this 4.9 million really kind of bothers me. That's a big deficit and I don't know how much longer, and we've talked about this before, how much longer can we continue to have a deficit each year before we run into trouble, I guess?
Keep in mind, budgeting for a deficit and ending up with a deficit are two very different things. And even though we've had a budgeted deficit in previous years, we haven't ended up with the deficit. So like I said, this year, I feel that we would high likelihood of ending up with a deficit based off our information as it stands today. You know, again, as Mr. Fugli says, we're going to look and poke and fine-tune and see what we can to reduce that as much as possible without making any drastic changes to the services we currently offer.
Mike, I believe you had a question?
Just real quick, Tracy Varner, you know, I think one of the things to remember is we're looking in, through binoculars and through the haze and trying to figure out what's going to happen. And so it's really hard for them to plan from the very beginning for a balanced budget because we don't even know how much money we're going to have. And so I think that just part of this process is, this is a projection and then as we're looking to go forward, we start to make decisions as the reality becomes clear. So I mean, I don't think we panic yet, I think it's just be aware.
I clearly understand that process.
Molly, did you have a question?
So, a question and then a comment. So the question is, is the $3 increase, you know, per pupil, is that the most that they're talking about this year? I mean, or is there any, because that really seems minimal when it comes to inflation.
As far as we know, I don't know if they've got a rabbit in the hat that we're going to see.
Okay, so maybe tomorrow might be good news.
I, I, I don't, I think I've seen this magic trick before and it's not really a magic trick. I'll just say that.
All right. And then, you know, I mean, has it ever been to where you bring up these projections and the board turns around and says, nope, we're not going to do the 4.9, you've got to make it 2.9. So when you bring the actual budget back to us for approval, no, 4.9 is not going to go through and we want to just see no more than, you know, the 2.9.
You know, I personally have never been in a situation where I've had to face that, so I don't know if Mr. Fugli has experienced some of that.
There's been a few years in the past where there's been a comfort range for what that deficit could be. And two, I just, I want everyone to keep in mind that, you know, we are budgeting like we are going to be fully staffed. Every single position is going to be full. We know that's not reality, but that's kind of what it is. But we've had kind of, you know, what is that comfort range and trying to fit that in? And I would say, I mean, we're on our side with, again, kind of the most minimal impact possible, going to be working on trying to reduce that number as much as we can. One of the things that I would say too, just to keep in mind, legislative years are really frustrating from a budget perspective. So Spencer showed you the timeline earlier, we are going to be bringing you a final budget in that last week of May. And we likely are not going to have final numbers from the legislature. So, and even earlier in that month in May, we're sending out letters of intent to our teachers. And, you know, the timing of all of this really is not optimal in any way. And so one of the, I guess, just a seed to plant is that, you know, when we get to that point, we still may not have perfect information and those numbers may not be where we like. One of the big benefits to having a really solid financial position is that even if we know going into the next year, like it's effectively a planned spend-down, we know we're going to deficit spend and districts do that, entities do that, we then have the next year to make adjustments to get all of these numbers back in line again. One of the things I wanted to mention too is, we have been waiting, expecting, there's been a lot of talk around what the state is going to do additionally related to mental health, because there was a Department of Justice settlement, the state has to do something. There's been absolute crickets on this and I think that in itself should be a substantial amount of funding that could come to districts and help with some of the costs that we have. But there, nothing has come out of that yet and I feel like the state has to do something because of that settlement. So what that may look like, how that may help us out, if it happens, hopefully over the next weeks, you know, we'll start hearing about something. I guess the bottom line is the timing of the session does not make any of this easy for us. But again, because we have been good stewards of the dollars that we have had and put ourselves in a good position, the idea of a planned spend-down of known deficit may be hopefully not this large in any way, but that is not out of the realm of what entities do, given some of the uncertainties that we have.
Thank you. So yeah, I'm not comfortable with that, the 4.9, and I know, I don't believe any of us would be. So, you know, I know these are assumptions and you're looking for guidance and from here, from up here to there, so I would ask that you, you know, do whatever you can and whatever magic tricks you have to bring that down. So when it does come to us, because that is very, very unsettling, and so I would hope that we would be able to bring it down. I don't know that I would be able to approve a budget with a deficit this large.
Alrighty, thank you for the input and the guidance. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Okay. I think we are good. Thank you so much for the presentation. I know it's scary, those are scary numbers, but you know, we recognize.
It keeps me up at night.
Yeah, for sure.
Alrighty, thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, approval of consent agenda, and this is for possible action. Okay, saw something, approve, approve. Okay, so motion by trustee Wall. Second, Richard Varner. Okay. Any board discussion? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 10, informational items, and this is for discussion only, no action will be taken. And I believe everyone of us, all of us had an opportunity to review that. Any comments or concerns? Okay. So agenda item number 11, request for future agenda topics. Anybody from the board?
One of the things that I think might be helpful, Spencer, is maybe you could do some briefings with individual trustees or groups of two, just kind of as some of these budget realities start to settle in to answer some of those questions, because it is pretty complex. And I think having you to kind of walk through some of this stuff might be helpful for some of us that are newer to the process.
I think that's a great idea. I would love to be part of that. Molly?
Because the grants play such a huge part of our budget as well, are we going to be hearing a presentation on grants before the budget comes forward? Because I, and the reason I ask is because I don't think we get a full picture of what grants are going to be ending at this fiscal year, which ones carry over? Do they carry over at the same, you know, amount that we have this year or are they, you know, do some have a 10% increase or are some going to be, you know? So I just think, because they do play such a huge, you know, they're a huge impact on our budget, that I would like to be able to hear grants' presentation and the forecasting of that before we hear the budget.
Yeah, we could put something together. I think, you know, we do have quite a bit of staffing costs in some of, in some of our grants, particularly Title I and IDA, big federal grants, and I think there's, it's been a really interesting month related to federal grants. And so I don't know that we, we can definitely give you a background and update you as we find out more about them, but we can certainly put something together to show some of that.
And I think it would be the assumption that there won't be a federal freeze. I mean, I think, you know, just to kind of assume that there's not going to be and what do we have because they are.
If I may, Madam President, I know NASB is hosting a training on March 6th, that a segment of that is on school district budgets. I hear the presenter is riveting and very entertaining and works for Carson City School District, so. So if you would like some of that opportunities, if that doesn't work in your schedule, you also can reach out to me and we can discuss kind of some of the house tools and ins and outs of the budget and what it looks like, so. But there is that opportunity on March 6th.
And I believe we all have signed up for that training, so thank you for the reminder.
Wonderful. Hopefully none of you now don't de-sign up now you know who's presenting some of it, so. Hopefully, thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. All right. We will move on to agenda number, item number 12, adjournment. Thank you so much, everyone.